All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to the June 1st regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano.
Just make sure you're on mute. There you go. Thank you.
Roll call. Mr. Alper.
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Here.
Mr. Rothstein.
Here.
Mrs. Trick Scales.
Here.
And Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Here.
Notice the meeting. Please take notice, adequate notice, this meeting has been provided for in a following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7th, 2020. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was pretty good. We're getting a lot better at that. May I have a motion for consideration of the public meeting minutes of May 13th?
A motion is moved.
And seconded.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Superintendent Report. Dr. Cascone, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, and good evening, members of the Board, members of the community. We have, under Superintendent's report, we have a number of important updates, but which would fall under my report. However, I would be remiss if I did not speak to the events which are taking place in our country in the wake of the tragic and senseless death of George Floyd in Minneapolis. I send my thoughts and prayers to his family, community, and all the families and communities which have been impacted by the recent events. Understandably and rightfully, these events have been very much on the minds of our community, family, students, and staff. I put out a statement on social media and School Messenger, which if you have not had the opportunity to read, I would ask you to take a look. In my meetings with principals today, it was clear that many teachers throughout our district have been putting on hold the immediate academic work of the day to provide open and safe forums for students to share their feelings and perspectives. Were we able to develop a fully cohesive instructional approach to addressing the recent events over the weekend? No, we were not. However, planning and responding to our students' needs has been at the top of the list of priorities today. And our student counseling and social studies departments have mobilized and assembling helpful resources to assist students in not only understanding these events, but also to help guide them in their desire and efforts to lend their voice to peaceful assemblies and demonstrations. In fact, Mr. Moore had dialogue today with student leaders on this very topic. And over the years, Mr. Moore and his administration have done a terrific job in honoring the student perspective and commitment to protests, whether it were gun violence or racism. And student activism and advocacy have always had a strong presence here in West Orange Public Schools. These efforts have borne fruit in the form of improved graduation rates, college admission and attendance, AP participation and SAT scores, decrease in suspensions, and really an exponential improvement in school climate and culture, in particular at the high school. And we will continue to support these efforts through both the instructional process as well as some of the many extracurricular clubs such as Diversity Club, GSA, and African and Asian American Heritage Clubs, to name a few. As you may know, this year, we continued the work of our rebranded Diversity, District Diversity Equity and Access Committee, placing emphasis on equitable hiring practices, culturally responsive teaching and curriculum, relevant training and professional learning for administrators and staff, and examining disproportionality, which exist in, for example, suspensions and student achievement and access. In fact, I had extremely productive dialogue and meetings with Mr. Tom Purrier and the local unit of the NAACP. And we are committed to working together for the benefit of our community's youngsters. This work is also reflected, as you will note, in this year's district goals and will continue to be so. As I've reflected on these events of the past week, I have focused on what we as a school district can do to change this reality. The reality that, as members of my leadership team, confided to me today, that as men of color, they felt obliged to have a conversation with their children about exercising caution relative to how they comport themselves in public, and that their parents had that same conversation with them when they were younger. The truth of the matter is that my parents didn't have that conversation with me, and they didn't have to. And while I have counseled my daughters about protecting themselves as women, I did not have to do that relative to their race. And that just simply should not be the case in our country. And so as an individual, and as I always have over the course of my career, I commit to continuing to be an advocate for what is right and just. And as superintendent of schools, commit to leading and nurturing an environment in which all students have instilled in them a sense of worth, value, and voice. Students who are emissaries of good, truth, and justice, and who are inclined to exercise their civic duties and rights. If all school districts do that, then we will build a society in which the injustices and ills, which so many of our fellow Americans suffer, will be expunged forever from existence. The school district and the Board of Education is here for you and your children. And while we have areas in which we can and should improve, I truly believe, because I have seen it with my own eyes and heard it from students and parents with my own ears, that our West Orange Public Schools are some of the safest, welcoming and supporting environments there are for our students. As you may do tonight and have done on the various social media platforms toward the school district, I would encourage you to advocate similarly to the legislators in Trenton and Washington. We are listening. We will act. Will they? In closing, I would urge, even as we may be angered, frustrated, and despondent, that we acknowledge that there is much good in the world, and even as there are dark forces and ignorance to drive out, that only light can do that. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce a gentleman who serves as the president of the West Orange Educators Association, who I've invited here tonight to share his perspective on the work that's ongoing and as a valued partner in the process, an important voice to lend. Mr. Mascalco, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd first like to thank the superintendent for inviting me to speak this evening and to acknowledge his steady leadership in these very strange times. I'd also like to thank the Board for ensuring that our students and staff have the resources necessary to continue our educational mission. Our principals and administrators have been there to provide guidance and leadership as well, and I'd be remiss if I did not thank them for their efforts. And I want to acknowledge the incredible work being done by our teachers, our professional staff, our paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, computer techs, and security, who all had to learn as they taught, changing on the fly, modifying, adjusting, and adapting to this new world. They always have dedicated themselves, not just to the academic growth of our students, but to their social and emotional health as well. In these times of isolation and fear, this has become an even larger part of our mission. And our staff has stepped up without hesitation and has met these challenges for our students, for their families, for the community. I applaud them. They make us all proud. And to those staff who are retiring this year, who have lost, at least for the moment, the chance to be formally recognized and thanked at our retirement party, let me take this moment to express the deep and abiding appreciation of the staff, of the W O E A, and the parents and of generations of students whom you have helped along in their journey towards a lifetime of learning and decency. You have touched eternity when you impacted these young lives. They carry you with them into the future. We all wish you many years of health and happiness in retirement. And of course, the most important people who need to be recognized are our students and their families, who are working so hard at their education in these uncertain and frightening times and doing so in new and unfamiliar ways. I must especially commend the senior class, the class of the pandemic, the class of 2020. It is truly sad that this class has lost so much of the culminating high school experience. But even when classes go virtual and in-person gatherings, like their prom, are banned, our seniors have shown themselves to be mature young adults, engaging with their teachers and classmates, completing their schoolwork, getting ready for their lives after high school. Hopefully, this storm will pass soon and we'll be able to join together as a community to celebrate together and in person your years in the West Orange Public Schools, your academic and athletic successes, your musical and performing talents, your art, your voices, your very essence. Hopefully, we'll see you in the fall at the homecoming game. Hopefully, when we reopen, you'll come back to visit, so we can give you a proper Mount New Year's send-off. And lastly, I would be completely remiss if I did not mention the other brutal, ugly, violent nationwide storm that we pray passes as soon as possible. We all know that racism and bigotry are the bastard children of our country's original sin, slavery. We know in our hearts that what is wrong is wrong, that evil is evil, and that no person should need to fear for his safety because of the tone of his skin. However, simply knowing these truths is not enough. If we ourselves are not agents of change, if we ourselves do not take action in our daily lives to eliminate racism, whether individual or institutional, if it is not a part of our very own essence to fight against wrong, then we are complicit. In the end, it is not just what is in our hearts that matters. It's how we act or fail to act that defines us. I am enormously proud of our community and our schools for embodying the spirit of Dr. King and measuring each other by the contents of our character rather than the colors of our skin. We are teachers and students, friends and neighbors, irrespective of race, sexuality, gender, or any other factor that could be used to divide us. We are not just a diverse community, but are one that is very proudly so. We celebrate our diversity and know that together we are all stronger for it, whether the storms we face are caused by a physical virus or by the virus of hate. We are diverse, and of course, we all have our differences, but in the end, we are one, unified. That is the West Orange way, and the West Orange way is the answer. Thank you for your time. On behalf of the W O E A, we pray that the retirees enjoy journeys that are long and filled with health, peace, and love. To the seniors, we offer you congratulations on all of your accomplishments and on thriving in the midst of this crisis. You have made us all proud. And to all our students, families, staff, and community members, we will stand together with you, and let's finish the year strong. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mascalco. And I appreciate that and all the efforts of our professional staff through these times. I'd like to turn it over now to our Assistant Superintendent for Cricket Instruction, Mr. Mendez, who has a brief statement which he'd like to speak to relative to the recent events in our country and then provide a little introduction to her presentation on the report card. So, Mrs. Mendez, after your initial statement, if you would just give pause, I'd like to provide some preface to your report on the report card.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Cascone. Absolutely. So I too would like to give pause to acknowledge these tragic events surrounding the unnecessary and horrific death of George Floyd, yet another black male life that unequivocally mattered. These acts of violence against our African-American community are certainly to be condemned, as should the inequities and consequences of natural and social and civic injustice that continue to plague the heart of our nation, whether it's poverty or racism or indifference, or the lack of access to employment, our educational resources, technology, the quality of medical care. These are all harmful, and they all impact the lives and the future and the purpose of our children. It's through the care and the love that we have one toward another, through our human and our civic responsibility that we must be prompted to respond to the injustices that continue to do harm to our Black and Brown communities and raise up a standard in the mind and the heart of our youngest citizens to always advocate for what is right, for what is good, for what is just, for what is ethical, for what is humane, for what is love. In echo of Dr. King, he said, "I have decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear." And so we too make that decision, and we decide to stick with love and education. Teach our children. Teach our children to love, to care, to be civically responsible, and to stand up for justice. Our teachers, as Dr. Cascone said, beginning with social studies but across multiple content areas, have leveraged instruction, developed relevant lessons, and continue to be provided with resources and documents and ways in which to engage our students in meaningful discussions around race and social justice in the wake of these week's events. Opportunity will be given to our students to discuss the distressing truths that run through the fabric of our society, that they may give voice to the hurt of a community, the African-American community, as they grapple with the effects of natural injustice and the plight of a people. And as a district, we will continue to ensure that equitable practices are employed in and across our district as well as move forward with our curricular focus, not solely on diversity, but on access equity, the seemingly difficult conversations around race and racism, microaggressions, and cultural empathy, and our responsibility to make a difference in our society.
Thank you, Mr. Mendez. Um, so just to provide, albeit a bit of a rugged segue from our reports relative to the current events, I'd like to just speak a little bit about the report which Mrs. Mendez is about to present on her elementary report card. As our parent community of elementary students may have recalled, a number of weeks ago, we communicated to the parent community that we were going to be going to a pass-fail approach on the elementary grades. And I'd just like to remind the parent community of what was driving that decision. And it was really twofold. One was that when we originally rolled out with our e-learning, we, there were, you know, a couple of weeks at the beginning of that transition where we were still working very, very hard to try and get devices into the hands of all of our students. While we have a one-to-one initiative, six through 12, that's not the case in K-5, meaning that students don't bring those devices home. And so it was really in the elementary level that we had the greatest effort and need to get devices into the homes. And we did ultimately get about 1,000 devices out into the homes. But what it meant was is that even as we were getting out hard copy packets, you know, we could not guarantee that all of our students, at least for the first week or two weeks, were actively engaged on the platform. Secondly, was that initially, when we rolled out, we did not have the capacity for students to submit assignments digitally. We did not have that capacity initially. We did ultimately implement that after several weeks when teachers were on Google Classroom, and now we do have that. And so those limitations early on led us to really start to question how we could grade students in this third and final trimester for the elementary schools. That was what led us to the pass-fail. But as we got to that pass-fail format, we started to really have conversations about how could we, you know, how could we fail students? What does that mean? And so we started having conversation about establishing additional levels of grading, if you will. And then that led to a discussion about how can we modify temporarily the report card in order that it captures more accurately the kind of work that is being done at home by students, which we know is somewhat different from what they do in schools, and also establish indicators which were more reliable and valid for teachers to be able to give marks for based upon what they were doing. And so I have to commend Mrs. Mendez and teachers, curriculum team, for really in a relatively short amount of time, doing some incredible work to basically pare down our report card. I will also note that we did put a survey out, and maybe Mrs. Mendez is going to speak to this a little bit in her report, but we did put a survey out. Mrs. Mendez conducted listening sessions with all the grades of our elementary teachers. We put out a survey to our elementary teachers and had in the high 90 percentages, a percentage of teachers who've supported movement to the new and revised report card in lieu of the older report card, the previous report card. So with that prelude, I will turn it back over to Mrs. Mendez to share with you the work that's been done.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. So as Dr. Cascone talked about in his introduction, we gave great consideration to an e-learning report card that would more accurately reflect what was being taught and assessed virtually. We took into account the fact that the technology had to roll out, that we had to develop a way to receive assignments from our elementary students, and really think about what independence looks like for a kindergartner or first grader at the elementary level who is self-directed in their learning at home and then having to submit assignments for the grading. So in response, we developed an instructional key around meets, approaches, and not evaluated. There is no fail on the report card. And so I'm going to share my screen with you so that we can see what this would look like. And hopefully, you're able to see that. Let me see. So this is an electronic version of the report card. There is a place here for the student's name and demographic information, but here you will see the instructional key. We've moved to meets, approaches, and not evaluated. Meets is that the student consistently meets grade level standards and expectations. The student performance is characterized by the ability to apply grade level concepts, skills, and understanding as demonstrated by their e-learning experience. It's important to note here that a student's first and second trimester will be considered as well as a third trimester, because this is the last report card of the year. If a student has demonstrated that they are consistently meeting grade level standards, they will receive a grade of meets. So for example, here in reading and comprehension, if I select meets as a teacher, it will automatically populate the indicator, consistently reads grade level text with purpose and understanding. And the auto-populate, well, the indicators are standardized across all grades and across all levels so that the teachers are assessing the same way, reporting the same way, and we have consistency. The second one is approaches. Student is progressing and understanding. However, grade level concepts and skills are not yet mastered. Student requires additional practice and support in order to meet proficient levels of understanding as demonstrated by their e-learning experience. Again, this is unique to e-learning. If a student is approaching, then the teacher would select approaching, and the predetermined indicator would populate the report card, progressing towards strengthening writing by planning, revising, and editing. We do have a small percentage of students who, if they're not submitting their e-learning assignments or sufficiently engaging in the work related to this area, then we are scoring them not evaluated. So not evaluated is not the F, but the not evaluated is saying the students haven't submitted assignments or they haven't sufficiently engaged in the e-learning. Therefore, we do not have a product to grade at this time. And if they select not evaluated, that is what would pop up on the report card. So our previous report card was about six pages in length. This one is one page. As Dr. Cascone said, we've pared down only to the standards that are actually being assessed and instructed via e-learning. So for math, science, social studies, health education, physical education, art, music, and world language. You will notice that these areas, here are specials, and then there's an area for teacher comment, for teachers to communicate directly with the parents regarding their student performance. Lastly, I would just note that when we did the survey, greater than 90% of the elementary teaching staff was in support of the revisions, and feedback was collected on the surveys and during listening sessions, and we made revisions to the report card based on that. We had great collaboration from all of the staff. Also, for the elementary grade levels, K through 5, June 12th will be the last day. Teachers assign students work to submit toward their grade. When considering the grade of not evaluated, parents should communicate with their teachers and their principals, if need be, to ensure that all of the work has been submitted prior to that date, prior to June 12th. June 19th, e-learning report cards will be sent to parents via email, as we did with our last trimester report card. And of course, for families who do not have access to internet, the report cards will be mailed home. It should be noted also that this e-learning report card is only for this third trimester. We don't expect to use the same report card should we return back to school, right? This is a temporary report card for this environment. And then some dates for the secondary. June 16th for grades 6 through 12 will be the last day that students will be assigned work. June 17th will be their last day to submit assignments, and again, June 19th, report cards will be emailed home. Thank you.
And I would just add to that that we, that Mrs. Mendez will be sending home correspondence within the next day or so to parents, all parents and guardians and families outlining the specifics that she presented in the report tonight. And again, I want to commend her and her team, tremendous and copious amount of work that was done in a very short amount of time. So we appreciate your efforts and those of your team. Before, just to transition to the final piece on the HIV report, I just wanted to provide some updates to the community, the Board, relative to kind of end-of-year procedures. I alluded to it in a correspondence that I sent home on Friday. And parents and guardians, families, will be receiving additional updates from principals going to this week, but I just wanted to share a couple of updates. So first, as relates to, you know, graduations and end-of-year ceremonies. So in our elementary schools, our elementary principals are in the process of planning some form of either a drive-by parade, if you will, past the school. In some cases, the teachers will bring that parade to the students' houses, but we will have some form of a recognition event for that. All the elementary schools are also doing some form of a virtual ceremony and a virtual recognition. And our elementary schools, from what I understand, students are, as they do in the past, getting T-shirts and lawn signs and things of that nature. So we're doing all we can on the elementary level to recognize them. The middle schools presently are doing, are planning their virtual ceremonies. The district, as a goodwill gesture, worked with the PTAs to subsidize the purchase of yearbooks for the Edison sixth graders as well as the eighth graders. And on the high school level, in addition to the virtual ceremony, which has been planned and will move forward on the 23rd, Mr. Moore and his team are also preparing, planning, along with local PD, a drive-through, you know, kind of stay in your car event on the night of graduation. Now, just to provide some clarity relative to the governor's more recent order relative to onsite in-person graduation ceremonies, and I think by this time, the nuances and kind of the fine print of that order have become more clear to people in that that order does not waive the current capacity limitation of 25 people. Now, while the governor has indicated that he, I'm paraphrasing, it is very unlikely that that capacity limitation will be in place in July. We don't have any indication of when that capacity limitation would be lifted and what the number would be that it would be lifted to. Would it be 50? Would it be 100? So obviously, in the absence of both the date and in the absence of a number, that makes planning for an event very difficult. So we are going to continue to await further guidance from the state, but at a certain point in time, we will have to, we will have to move forward with other plans. And if, in fact, we're not able to do an en masse onsite graduation, we will have alternate opportunities following the week of graduation, the virtual graduation, for parents and graduates to come to the high school in a safe manner to take pictures, to be given their diploma, and have an event with their parents to recognize that rite of passage. But we are really at the mercy of the state and the timeliness with which they provide us with these updates. And we are obviously in the same boat as school districts around the state in this regard. Material drop-off and pickup, principals, some of these processes, in particular at the high school, and have already moved forward in terms of drop-off of musical instruments, things of the like. Principals will be communicating out as to, in particular for our seniors and for students who are leaving their buildings, the process by which that will occur. And so should stay tuned for those updates from principals. Our summer programs, as reported in my correspondence, will be virtual. We are not running our summer enrichment program. And again, it really comes down to the fact that when that program is supposed to start in the absence of any kind of guidelines, we need to be able to move forward in one way or another, planning a program. And we just don't have the information that allows us to do that this time. And we just don't have the information that allows us to do that at this time. And as far as athletics go, you'll notice in the recent governor's order that organized athletic practices can begin on June 22nd. Now, my interpretation of that is that is for community and recreational programs, not for scholastic athletics as schools are closed through June 30th. However, I am meeting this week with the recreation directors from the township as well as the athletic director and the high school principal to begin looking at and talking through some of the national guidelines from the Athletic Federation and the feasibility of beginning athletic practices at some point in time during the summer. Final piece, many folks are already aware of the fact that we did get our state aid cuts. We had kind of foreshadowed the fact that we might be receiving some state cuts based upon the loss of revenue on the state level. We did in fact get that and the district received a, a cut of $1.5 million, which was slightly less than what we expected. We expected that we were at least going to lose the additional aid. We had received about 2.3 million, so it's 1.5 million. And I'm working presently with the, the business office to develop a proposal to share and then collaborate with the board on the best way to recoup that money. I will say that that figure is not nearly as daunting in terms of finding ways to recoup those funding. And presently, I'm not foreseeing any significant or drastic impacts on either staffing or programming as a result of those losses, but additional information will be forthcoming to the public once we've had an opportunity to discuss it amongst the administration and the board. And that is, that concludes my end of year procedure update. Before I move to HIV, I just wanted to turn it back over to Mr. Alper and you know, the board had any questions regarding either the report card or any of the other aspects of the report.
Exactly. Anyone with questions for Ms. DeMendez or Dr. Cascone on the board?
I have a quick question. Evan, if you wouldn't mind, I'm just giving some clarification. I've heard there's been some concern from parents about their child getting or receiving notification that their child is failing. So if you could just maybe speak to that to ease some of the concerns about that. And then the other question I had was with, with the report card and being pass fail, I know our fifth graders have traditionally been eligible for honors classes and going into sixth grade. And if you could just speak to the community that's here with us tonight virtually about how that'll look in terms of the honors program going into next year. I know it's a little bit different from last year. So just how will this impact that?
Sure. So I think first important to kind of separate out K5 through 612. The, the, the complications that I, I mentioned relative to elementary were not present to, to, to a great extent in grade six through 12, meaning that most of our most of our students already had access to, to a device. So the technology access piece was not as much of an issue as it was in the elementary level. And, and due to the fact that our secondary teachers were already familiar and in some case utilizing Google Classroom, there was also not really a lag in students being able to submit individual assignments. Our approach in grade six through 12 has, has remained to, to provide grades. And we've been, we've been kind of focusing on that in, in a number of different ways. And so one of the things that I had, that we had shared previously was that our, our administration, our school administrations and our guidance counselors have been very hands-on in terms of auditing the, the platform for students who have not been present, who have not been turning in assignments or have not been participating daily on, on the platform to reach out to them directly and understand what the cause of that is, right? And have gone as far as to note within a spreadsheet of, you know, what the reason for that is. So in some cases, when we conducted that outreach, we've learned, you know, the parents were ill. Both parents were ill and the, the child was actually taking care of their siblings. Or, or they, their technology was broken, or they were extenuating. Or, or the child was just simply having a very difficult time, whether socially, emotionally, or academically. And so in those cases where there were mitigating and extenuating circumstances, there was, there, there were concessions and, and supports put in place for those students. We've also built in regular catch-up days for students to make up the work. And, and in addition to that, have conducted grade analyses comparing the grade distributions between this year and last year. Well, the feedback that we received, not only from parents, but also from principals and staff, is that to, to have gone to a pass fail on the secondary level would have removed a, a, a level of responsibility that would have led to perhaps an even greater degree of indifference and apathy as it related to students doing the work. We also had concerns and advocacy on the part of high school students and parents of the impact of moving away from grades, which would contribute to a GPA versus a pass fail, which would not. And although we've heard that, you know, institutions of higher learning are going to be, give this year a pass, that was not a chance that we were, we were, we were willing to take for our students was to basically have this year kind of null and void from a GPA standpoint. But what we're finding is, is that not unlike in any school year, when we're in brick and mortar, you have students who are playing a numbers game. They're playing a numbers game, looking at what their grades were up until the third marking period and what grade they could, they, what's the lowest grade they could get in their fourth marking period and still get a grade that they were satisfied with. You know, I think, you know, we've always known about senioritis and obviously on a virtual platform, you know, that's certainly no less than it would be if students were in the building. And so the high school administration in particular has been very deliberate and conscientious about identifying students who are not doing the work because they're experiencing challenges that are making them difficult to do that. And students who are simply checking out and not doing the work for a lack of effort. And that, that's, that's kind of an overview of, of where we are with the grading procedure. Ms. DeMendez, I don't know if you had anything to add on that?
No, I, I concur. We've led with flexibility, flexibility, flexibility. We've given students opportunities to hand work in at any time. We've not closed window. They can hand in their assignments late. And for the 1% of students who just are not handing it in, then those students, their families, they've been communicated with. You know, the students are aware, the parents are aware, and they will be graded accordingly. With regard to honors, honors, we have all of the criteria in place because we are able to use the criteria that existed prior to school closure. For example, the NJSLA scores from the previous year. We were able to use MAPS scores from the fall prior to our school closure. And students who are already in honors will remain in honors. So we feel confident in the criteria having existed or having that data set prior to the school closure. We will continue to use that data set. And if there are any parents or students who wish to appeal, we are thinking about ways to conduct that testing in the summer, once we find out how we can do so safely and/or we will find a way to do that virtually. But we will pretty much keep all of those things in place. Equally for gifted and talented, we're moving forward with those criteria the same way. So we're using last year's NJSLA, this year's full map. We're also considering the FNP, which is the Fontaine Sempernales, the reading levels. And each of these honors and gifted, we are reaching out to teachers for their recommendation. And principals will review those in committee as they normally would. And we will be informing parents before school closes for honors and by August for gifted and talented as we normally would.
Thank you. I think the key there is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like communication is really the, the key factor here that any parent who feels, or doesn't understand a grade or an email or something that they've received, they should just reach out and work through the proper chain of commands.
Absolutely. And parents will be receiving a memo outlining their new report card and honors and GNT this week.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Yeah, question about summer programs. For students who are eligible for and in need of the summer programs, how will they become aware of that eligibility and when will those communications be sent?
Sure. So I, I had, thank you, Ms. Rothstein. I had, in my recent conversations with the high school team, those, you know, the process of identification is, is, is in, in play, is in motion presently. And Ms. Chung, the high school assistant principal oversees that program. And, you know, they will be reaching out to those students and those families shortly. Of course, you know, to, to some extent, you know, we'll, we'll need another couple of weeks before we see how things shake out relative to, you know, the, the final grades. But those, those communications will occur as they have typically in the past and according to those same timelines.
Thank you.
Mr. Alper?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm on my iPhone, so I apologize to everybody. If it's jumping, I'm holding it. But I wanted to just say how pleased I am that we moved away from the pass fail for our elementary students and that we've moved to those three levels. But I'm really concerned about the students who are not evaluated and just wondering if we have a feel for who they are. Well, we certainly should by this point in time. And what intervention measures we're currently taking and then what's going to happen in September if we find after assessment that these students have fallen really way behind.
Sure. So one, one of the things we, you know, we did, and I'm going to say it's, it's going back at least four weeks ago, was that we, we leveraged the, the involvement and the assistance of, of Ms. Granato, our, our director of basic skills. And so in every school, the basic skills teachers, we, you know, the principals identified a list of students who were, had not been responsive for whatever reason. Even in spite of multiple calls, in some cases, we did home checks and things of that nature to try and wellness checks to make sure folks are okay. And so basically, for approximately the last four or five weeks, the basic skills teachers have each kind of taken on a caseload of students and applied a more targeted approach to working with those students. So theoretically, the, the number of students who would register as not evaluated should be significantly less than they were five or six weeks ago. I should also just clarify that, that you could have a student that, that could be, that, that might receive meeting or approaching in certain indicators and not evaluated in maybe another one or, or multiple other ones. And so if we're talking about the student that is going to receive not evaluated for the entire report card, I would say, and I'm, you know, that, that those students, I, I would suggest that we don't have any students or very few students in the single digits who have been absent or, or missing in action, so to speak, on the platform, that we would not be able to evaluate them at all. Now, in terms of what we're going to do to bridge gaps, right? And so, you know, if you want to use special education as a parallel, obviously for special education, many students will participate in the extended school year program and kind of picking that, you know, picking up on Mr. Rothstein's question from the last time we met, you know, the ESY program, it might have been your question, Ms. Trixgales. The ESY program, one of the main functions that that's going to serve is trying to assess the degree to which the closures created regression and backsliding for those students. Now, for any students that participate in summer school, and that really would just be for rising ninth graders and high school students, but for all other students, that, that process is going to have to occur early in the school year in the fall. I would suggest that as part of our planning, as we start to put together steering committees and task force, be they district or school-based, and one of those is dedicated specifically to instruction. One of the conversations is going to be about how are we modifying or start of our school year to build in more opportunities for diagnostic assessment to understand kind of where kids are. If we're in brick and mortar, well, then we will move forward in the way that we typically do as far as delivering interventions. If we're virtual, it'll be a little bit more complex, but that will be a very key and essential question that we look at as we start to plan for opening in September.
A lot, oh, I'm sorry.
With curriculum and instruction, we've already begun our discussions about compacting the curriculum. So all of the supervisors are, along with teachers, beginning to look at the curriculum for next year. We're going to set a plan in place to analyze that over the summer and make decisions around knowing that at the very beginning, as we move into a new framework, possibly a hybrid model, that we may need to begin next year just with unpacking socially and emotionally what has just happened to us, right? As children, they need to speak, they need to understand what's taking place and then review. And as Dr. Cascone is talking about the assessments and then enter into contact, content. So we may need to compact the curriculum, remove areas that we feel are not as essential as our power standards and the things that we absolutely have to teach next year and, and begin to condense from now, planning from now, what is it that we're going to cover next year? So that way, we have room for adequate review, adequate time to provide intervention and to scaffold some of the instruction that may have been missed for our most neediest learners.
Right. And a lot of the reading and learning that I've done recently certainly talks about the first thing that we have to do is to assess the social, emotional learning and then second the academic. So I'm happy to hear that, you know, we're gearing up for that because we have no blueprint for how to do this, of course. But we know that this has been very traumatic for our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trixgales.
Is Tonic Cliff anything? All right. Muder, thank you. That was, you know, I really liked the look of the new report card. I think that's, you know, I agree with Ms. Trixgales. I like that we've gone to a, you know, three-tiered thing instead of just pass fail. I think that makes a big difference. All right, Dr. Cascone, back to you.
Okay. And just in, in closing out my report, and I appreciate the, the board's patience, we do have an HIV report. And I have reviewed the full report from the anti-bullying specialist and do, do concur with the finding that it did not meet all the criteria as defined by the HIV statute and therefore is not confirmed, though did constitute a code of conduct violation and is, has been addressed appropriately by the administration and student counseling office.
Right, thank you. All right, moving on. At this time, questions from the public on agenda items only. There'll be a second public comment period later in the meeting for comments on any topic. This is just for agenda items. I know there's a few more people here than there usually are, so I'll just point out, we have a three-minute limit. Please try to stick to that. We won't cut you off instantly, but you know, we'd want to make sure everybody gets a chance, so we try to respect that. You can follow the instructions on screen and that you'll hear in a second. When you come in, just make sure you let us know your name and your address.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a public comment this time. You can use the raise your hand button that's located at the bottom of your screen for our call-in viewers or listeners. It's star nine if you'd like to speak. So I'm just going to wait a couple of seconds here. We don't have anyone raising their hand.
Okay, we'll give that a couple more seconds just in case. And we will get ready to head over to policy for our second reading of the allergy policy. And if we still see no one, Dr. Cascone, do you want to kind of, oh, wait.
No problem. Sharon, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you can just state your name, full name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Sure. Sharon Bullen-Haggy, West Orange, New Jersey. I have two children in the West Orange High School, one of which has an IAP. And the special services were quite challenging this, during this pandemic. We lost a lot of traction at the beginning. I know you've mentioned you've taken some recourse there, but as we get into the extended summer program, have we adopted new, new tools? have we adopted new, uh, new tools, new practices on how to support special service, uh, children that are going into the E S Y program?
I can respond to that, Mr. Alper, if you like.
Um, yeah, thank you. Why don't we just see if there's anyone else for, uh, agenda comment? And then yes, please do.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone at this time? You do not have to wait for the last person to finish talking. You can raise your hand at any time during. Okay. Thank you, um, Ms. Mordecai. If you can, uh, follow the prompt on your screen, please. Okay. Are you there, Sandra?
Yes, hi.
Great. Thank you.
Say, Ms. Mordecai, five sixty Pleasant Valley Way. I have a few questions. I saw the agenda. A couple of things. You are implementing an autism program at Gregory School. Isn't there one already in Kelly School? And that was, uh, means of class deficiencies to consolidate, uh, special education teams and resources. Aren't you going to go back to the same, same old excessive, expensive policies? And in, in light of this budget year where you're now losing 1.5 million? I can't believe that you'd be reversing that. I'm, I'm just surprised to see that. Also, whatever happened to the autism program after the memorandum of agreement that you have with Montclair State University for autism with Kelly School? I see on the agenda that you're proving another such alliance. I just want to know how that fits in with that plan. And, um, that, that, those are my questions for the agenda. Oh, wow. One more. For the report that was given earlier about the pass fail rate, what is the current dropout rate at the high school? For the students who would normally get help in the summer with the credit recovery program, what will there be in place for them? I, I know that you talked about the pass fail rate and about, um, parents receiving notification that their students were not going to pass this year. I, I can't imagine that anybody would fail. It's such a traumatic time, even for an adult. I can't imagine that any student is functioning at a hundred percent. So I, I'm surprised that anyone's failing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kristen, if you can, uh, please follow the prompt that is on your screen.
Okay. Hello?
Uh, there you go. Can, uh, name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Russell, uh, fifty-three Lawrence Avenue. Um, I too, and I, and I know I said this, I think at the last board meeting, you know, I too think there needs to be at least at the elementary level. I don't know what's going on, um, in the older schools. I have a first grader and a preschooler with a disability. More connection with the teachers, things like that. We have put that in place for my first grader, which has helped a lot. But looking at now that E S Y is going to be also virtual, I am concerned with my youngest who has an I A P and has fallen behind greatly. Is there, you know, I kind of am echoing what was said before, just what is the plan for implementing something maybe a little more rigorous for E S Y? And in the fall, if there is a modified schedule of some sort? That's just kind of what I'm looking to find out.
Okay. Erin, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, sure. My name is Erin Robbins. I'm at Sixth Ridgeview Avenue. And I have one daughter and one son. My daughter is in first grade with Ms. Portuzzi. My son is not yet in, uh, in kindergarten. He's four. But, um, I just want to kind of reflect on my experience, um, since the pandemic and in general. And I, I, I apologize if, um, you know, I'm, I'm talking outside of the agenda. I, for the life of me, could not find the agenda, even though I was looking at the, the Zoom invitation. So, um, I apologize for that. But the first thing I'm thinking about is, um, the experience of having, for whatever reason, um, a child who is responding to this with a lot of emotionality and worry and, um, is, is quite rebellious right now. And, and I'm really struggling to, um, navigate that and her four-year-old brother and a private practice and a husband who's working full-time. And all of the other things that all the other parents and people are dealing with, uh, right now. And I think, you know, for me, the choice has been many days, if not most days, to avoid disrupting, um, the sanctity of the relationship with my child, uh, over school. Because when we try to do school, it becomes just an, uh, an outright struggle and crying and fighting and I, I can't do it all. And I feel like a failure, uh, right now, uh, when it comes to school because I am, we are not by any means meeting the standards that are expected. At the same time, my child is directing her own learning. And I highly value that and I highly believe that somewhere in this, I hope that we will start to also value the learner over the needs of the institutional requirements. And, you know, I've gotten, um, an email from, uh, Principal E about my daughter's, um, you know, missing assignments and such and have responded to her. And by the way, her teacher has been absolutely amazing and so supportive and has worked so hard. And I know they're putting their all into this and everybody's in a situation where, they're so limited. But the material is flat, um, unfortunately. And, and that's only because it's one-dimensional and children learn in three-dimensional ways. And, and so my daughter is, is just not accepting that. And you know what? I don't really blame her. And so maybe that's partially my philosophy. So, you know, I, I guess when I hear some of the things you talked about today around the three-tiered approach, I am, uh, somewhat heartened and comforted by the fact that it's not pass fail because my daughter would be failing and, you know, even saying that feels really crappy. But, um, because, you know, I mean, she's, she's learning right now because she's teaching herself and being extremely creative and imaginative and, and writing and doing all the things, just, just not the assignments she's been, she's been given by school.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I really just urge you to think and take this opportunity to consider things a little bit differently. And I think that's actually been a long time coming. And I think there are models for that. I know there are models for that. And I do think this, you know, school system, at least in New Jersey, from my experience, really needs to take a look at that and, and really also consider, you know, what parents are going through right now.
Thank you.
Also, one last plug. We need a social justice curriculum. It is completely absent and it needs to start from kindergarten. Thank you.
Okay. If we have anyone else at this time? Again, for our call-in, uh, listeners, it is star nine on your telephone. And for listeners on the computer, it is the raise your hand button. And you don't have to wait for the last person to finish talking before you raise your hand. Okay. We have no more. Thank you.
Great. Uh, some good questions and good points in there. Please don't, and no one should feel like a failure. You know, you're not alone. I know there's been a good number of communications about relationships over rigor and things like that. And I'm sure we'll hear more about that in a second. But I just wanted to say that at the outset, that, you know, no one, parent or child should feel like a failure. We know this is hard for a lot of families and, uh, we, we do get it. Dr. Cascone?
Thank you, Mr. Alper, and, uh, thank you to, um, all the folks in the community came to speak. Starting with the, uh, the E S Y program. So, you know, obviously, um, conducting these programs virtually, you know, it's not, it's not ideal. It's not our preference, um, any more than how we're approaching things right now is ideal or our preference. That being said, um, students, uh, who participate in the E S Y program can expect, um, a different experience. Or I should say, uh, more consistent, daily synchronous, um, interaction with teachers, for instruction. Uh, and that will also be the case for, um, our, um, high school summer school program and step-up program. It will look and, and, and feel, uh, very different from, um, you know, the, the daily experience. And, and we're, we're sort of excited by that because we feel like this is an opportunity to, uh, to pilot, um, an approach, which if we were to, um, uh, go into more long-term virtual learning down the road, would be something to which we would aspire, um, you know, on a more regular basis. So, um, to speak, that was my, one of my first questions to, to Ms. Cogerty, as it was to the high school team. And, you know, the extent to which, uh, we could, parents and students could expect that. It's the reason why we, uh, we, we, we did not support, uh, using strictly a distance learning platform, a program like Edge C or New Jersey Virtual High School or Apex Learning for our summer school, because we really feel the, the need, uh, the importance of having that interaction with students. Relative to, um, Mrs. Mordecai's, uh, question about the autistic program, Mrs. Mordecai is correct. Kelly School has, uh, has historically been the place where we've housed, uh, the, the majority of our special education programs. But, you know, space at Kelly School is not unlimited. So, um, there have been occasions where we've had to establish programs in other schools where space is permitted. For example, we offer a, uh, a B D program at Redwood School. Um, and due to a lack of space, um, we have, um, begun a program at, an autistic program at Gregory School. Just to kind of put it in the context of the budgetary piece, by enabling us to establish this program in district, uh, keeping these youngsters in their community, in their community schools, that obviously is the primary benefit. But it also will enable us to educate at least five or six students in district who otherwise we would have had to send to added district placements and bear the expense of added district placements. So outside of the fact that we weren't able to accommodate this class due to space at Kelly School, there's a lot of upside there, uh, for that program. We do, in fact, continue to collaborate, um, and, and partner with the Montclair program. I understand, and, uh, in some of my conversations with Ms. Cogerty, we use them primarily as a, a professional learning consultant. In fact, uh, we did, uh, work with them this year to do some, uh, training, uh, with our, um, um, our pre-K teachers. Just to give you a little bit of information about the, um, the item on the agenda, and I, I'm not sure of this, what Mrs. Mordecai was referring to, um, if it was, um, related to the, the ACE program. But the, the Autistic Curriculum Encyclopedia Program, um, is a software system that contains assessments, lesson plans, data collection and graphing tools to supplement the district curriculum and maximize the progress of the students in the program. The Lesson Planner Program Bank accesses areas with, within ABA education, communication, social skills, academic, self-help, discrimination, health and safety, recreation, community vocational, transition to adulthood. The design allows for students who require various forms of teaching, DTI, task analysis, incidental and naturalistic. So it, 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 it promises, it's, it's a healthy investment directly into our autistic programming to ensure that our teachers have access to, uh, the most, uh, state-of-the-art resources. So it is a bit different than, um, the arrangement that we have, uh, through Montclair. Specific to the credit recovery. As I, you know, I kind of spoke to, um, you know, um, no one wants anyone to, for lack of a better word, fail. And, and, and I don't like the word. I never liked the letter. But this is about, and it's no different than for the elementary student who's, um, who, who, who's regressed and who now has backslid. And the question of what are we going to do for that student to ensure that they're prepared to move on to the next grade? And so instead of looking at, um, credit recovery, which we will offer, a, as something punitive, um, I would suggest, and it's, as the step-up program as well, that we are ensuring that in, in, in light of the closures, that we're going to close whatever, whatever, uh, skill and, and content, knowledge gaps these students have. I, I would suggest that we were doing just as much of a disservice to them if we were to move them on to the next grade level without having provided them an opportunity to remediate whatever skill, skill deficiencies there were in moving on in their, in their high school career. And so reframing the way we're looking at it is not punitive, but is an opportunity to ensure that, uh, that, that they get the credit that they need and they have their knowledge and skill gaps filled in. And, um, you know, the reality of it is, is that, you know, we're not going to have any more students, most likely, and I haven't looked at the data yet and we absolutely will. Unfortunately, we have students that take summer school every year and it's somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred or so students. And that is very likely the number of students that we'll have in summer school this year. So we, we're not looking at exponentially more students. So this is a different view on it, a different perspective on it. And as far as just the final piece about the, um, the paradigm, I, I think that we've learned, uh, many lessons relative to, um, you know, what we can do to enhance the experience, um, in, in the event that, um, we're not, um, you know, we're not in back at school full-time. Now, I do believe that the likelihood of, of students being on-site, at least for part of the school week, will be there. So I think some of the challenges that have been seen this year will be mitigated. But rest assured that we're going to be debriefing this experience on the parent's side, on the staff's side, on the student's side, and making what adjustments we can to ensure that when we operate in a virtual environment moving forward, if we have to do that, that we're accounting for those things as much as possible. Some of the challenges that are faced, there's, there's not, um, you know, there's not, there's just certain things that the school district can't, um, resolve. But I think by, um, having the teacher be more present in a synchronous manner, when and if possible, could certainly be helpful to parents, uh, and to students at home.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. All right. Closing that section of policy, uh, allergy policy, second reading. Wants to lead into that. I can?
I don't know if people are muted or not. I didn't know if, uh...
Gotcha. Ms. Mark Gungar, Ms. Trixgals, if you have anything you want to add on this or we can, uh, I can just run through it.
I'm fine, Mr. Alper. We can move along.
All right. So we have, uh, you know, this has been a long time coming and we did, uh, first reading a little while ago and we have the second reading up tonight. Uh, and I will take a motion for second reading on this policy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just want to thank all the members of the community that, um, provided input, all of our nurses, um, staff. I think this was just one of those, um, really great, uh, products that came from multiple resources, multiple facets of knowledge from well within the community and our school district. So I just want to recognize, um, and thank everyone that, um, helped put this together, bring it forward, um, and help us get to this point.
Yes, and I echo that. And I'd like to, in particular, thank a member of the community, Mrs. Nicole Ruffo, who is now, um, her handle is the Allergy Advocate. And she has really been instrumental in moving this forward. So I thank her on behalf of all of our families who have children, um, with allergies. And again, thank you to the nurses.
Anyone further? I will echo and agree with both of those comments. And, uh, again, thanking the community and Ms. Ruffo in particular. All right, uh, Mr. Calabano, let's vote.
Mrs. Mark Gungar?
Yes.
Mr. Whatstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Sunny Cliff?
Yes.
President Trixgals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Next, may I have a motion for personnel items one through seven?
Yes, I'm so moved.
A second.
Any discussion?
Um, are we splitting, it's one through seven, so a personnel?
Right. It's one. That's everything. One through seven is everything.
Okay. Okay.
Congratulations to the three retirements, Eric Bryce, Judith Jessup and Joan Ball. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Calabano?
Mrs. Mark Gungar?
Yes.
Yes, with the exception of number six, but it falls under under leaves of absence. I'm not sure why, but it's under leaves of absence.
No, four is leave of absence and then it has A1 and B1 and then five, six, and seven are separate numbers.
Yes, so... Yes, so that would, does that make sense?
So yes on all, no on number six?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Woodstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Sunny Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trigscals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Next, curriculum and instruction items one through five, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Sunny Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trigscals?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Next, finance, special services items one through six and business office items one through 18, may I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? I'll give folks a second, it's a few pages to turn.
I actually just have a few, I guess, clarifying questions I think would be helpful for just to hear on some of the points that, or some of the things that we're reviewing because there are quite a number of them. So number 11, we're going to be moving our grant services, I think it is? Is that, do I have the right number?
You do.
Okay, so if, Scott, can maybe speak to a little bit about that company and why we are moving to them? It's a very positive thing for us. But if you could speak to the community, since we have so many folks on tonight, a little bit about that and just what the difference or what the change is for Power School with moving to Blackboard? Or I'm sorry, School Messenger to Blackboard? And just what that would entail for folks, just to understand what that is.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Merklinger. So relative to, just to talk to the board and the district and participants a little bit about Hanover. So presently and for the last number of years, and I don't know how many exactly, but we have, as part of our annual budget, allocated $40,000 for the purpose of grant writing services. And the present partner with whom we work is through New Jersey School Boards. But the grant writing partner is a third party. It's not School Boards itself, but it's a third party that kind of works with School Boards. And we pay them a relatively small kind of retainer, if you will, for the year. And then if we want them to write a grant for us, they charge us a per-grant cost. And typically that charge is about $2,000, but it could be slightly less. It could be more depending upon the scope of the grant. But what we don't really get from this partner is really robust grant prospecting services. In other words, I go to the administrative team, I say, hey, you know, give me some needs, what are some things that you'd love to be able to grant fund? I go to our partner and say, here are our focuses. Now, you know, go out and find us some potential opportunities that we could apply for. They come back to us, they say, these are some potential opportunities, present those to the administrators who recommended them, and then the firm actually writes the grant for us, understanding that that always requires some collaboration with an internal partner who has access to the data or the specific needs and so on and so forth. But it's, we're limited in the number of grants we could have written by virtue of the allocation. What Hanover is, is Hanover is a full consultancy, meaning that for the annual cost of just under $40,000, we would have access to them 24/7. It would almost be like having a full-time grant-writing prospector and writer on our staff, except for the fact that this is a large grant-writing firm that's based out of Arlington, Virginia. They are in a variety of different spaces, K-12 is only one of them. They also offer other suites of services which we're not contracting for but would be available to us if we wanted to do that moving forward. And that is specifically do a lot of consulting relative to really anything you could possibly want insight on. So for example, if you were looking to do schedule changes, if you were looking to change your one-to-one initiative, if you were looking to do a financial analysis of your district, they could, if you were looking to do a strategic plan and didn't want to do it locally through your own administration, they would do that. Now, by contracting with them, we would also, and this is just kind of another perk, is we would have access, free access to their archive of every research study that they've done for any of their partners. And this is a national firm, so they've done, they've done research studies for school districts and case studies for school districts around, they've done lit reviews around the country, thousands of studies. And we would have access, our administrators would have access to those services. But basically, we would have unlimited grant writing, prospecting, and writing. So if we wanted them to write 20 grants for us, they would write 20 grants for us. There would be no limit to that. And they are in the New Jersey space in a number of school districts in the New Jersey space. They don't have a large footprint in New Jersey, but they are doing business with a number of school districts already. And that would be the basic difference between, and we did look into some other companies, some more local companies. And none of those companies are really prepared at this point to do a full consultancy relationship with a public school. They do them with private entities, but they're not really prepared to do that. Hanover was the only one that we found that was really willing to enter into a full consultancy with a public school district. Any questions about that?
Dr. Kascón, it mentions one project at a time, am I reading that correctly? I read that on the letter that was attached in our packet. Do you know if that's accurate and what that means really?
Well, I think that, you know, as opposed to having, you know, multiple balls in the air at one time, but I, in my, you know, in my conversations with the company, if we had, if we had two projects, and Mr. Calabano and I, you know, confirmed that, but if we needed two projects occurring simultaneously, I don't really feel that would be, that would be an issue. And if so, then we can, we can look at the language in the contract and ask for clarification on that and have it revised before we sign off on it.
Right, thank you, because I would think that once we get a great deal of interest among the staff, that we could potentially have more than one idea going at a time, more than one project.
Agreed. Mr. Calabano, would you make note of that?
I did, and when we met with them, it didn't seem like, I think they were willing to accept as many grants that we wanted them to pursue. So I don't see that being an issue, but I'll follow up tomorrow with them.
Okay, thank you.
We actually have a call already scheduled with them tomorrow, so we can add that to our list of questions. Any other questions from the board concerning Hanover? Before I move on to Blackboard? So prior to my arrival, an initiative had started in the committee, a multi-stakeholder committee had been formed to evaluate our website. And out of that work came the recommendation to move forward in utilizing our existing provider, Blackboard. Blackboard has a number of modernized, updated templates. And ultimately, we felt that sticking with our current provider, not only could they offer us a refreshed look that we wanted, but also this would eliminate the need to now retrain all staff, and parents for that matter, on utilizing an entirely new platform. Okay? Now, as far as, now the Blackboard, and just so you know, that is, that is a cut over that originally we were planning on doing around April, maybe early May. But obviously with the closures, it kind of shut our committee work down on that. So now we're looking to do this cut over to the new format, to the website over the summer and have that rolled out and ready to go for our staff and our parent communities for the beginning of next school year. Also happening over the course of the summer will be not just simply putting a new face on it, but also really working through the kind of information we have there, the amount of information we have there, and really rethinking the website as what do people go to the website? What kind of information, what reasons do they go to the website? When we have all these other communication vehicles that we're using. But more specifically, to Mrs. Merklinger's question about School Messenger, Blackboard has a unified communication system that could take the place of School Messenger. Doesn't mean that it absolutely has to, but it could. Recognizing obviously that there's a learning curve and certainly at this point in time, with the importance of keeping our community informed and communicating with our community, we probably would not want to switch horses midstream at this juncture. But it is something to consider for the district because if we were to utilize the Blackboard Unified Communication System, which operates pretty much identically to School Messenger, we would not have the need for a separate communication platform and we would not have to incur the cost of an additional communication platform. It would be a matter of A, retraining people on how to use it, and we would have to reregister people, which would not necessarily be a bad thing because we know that we have some gaps in terms of having current information on our School Messenger platform in spite of many reminders to update that information. But we're not obliged to use their communication platform. It is an option that's available to us.
Yeah, and I did recall, I did actually, I thought, I had questioned earlier about Power School and I thought your response was really informative and informational for parents and I think it's going to ease up a lot of, make things a little bit more efficient. So if you could just speak to what the Power School eCollect form is going to entail? I think parents will be excited about that.
Sure, appreciate it. Right, so we've added, well, on the agenda tonight is a motion to to add a module to our current Power School license, which would enable us to go exclusively digital with all of our parent forms. Now, I should put a slight asterisk next to that statement, which is that in our school closures, we've learned that, you know, that we, there is a bit of a digital divide, whether it's due to access or to computer literacy. So I want to just put an asterisk beside that and say that there will always remain the opportunity for people, if they so choose, and don't have the ability to do it via computer, to do it hard copy. But for anyone that has the connectivity, the access, the literacy to be able to do that, all of our forms, namely our athletic forms, which I know has been a bugaboo for people and an inconvenience for people that these have had to be hard copy forms, all of that will be digitized. And I think particularly moving into next year, as we were not sure exactly whether we'll be onsite, being able to do all of that digitally will be a huge benefit to the district and a service to the parents and family members.
Yeah.
Anything further?
Question, Mr. Alper.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I sleep special services one to six? Did I miss that?
I mentioned it when I did, I said special services one through six and business office one to 18.
Okay, okay, so I'd like to, I'd like to back up to number five under special services, the approval of the nurse service plan. I read that with great interest and concern. We have never had to open a school following a pandemic. And so I am, as I said, concerned that our nurses will have everything that they need and require. And mostly, as they talk about, their concerns as well. They have an overload already in many cases with just trying to keep up with with physicals and the paperwork and the number of students who do have medical needs. So I'm just wondering how the district is going to gear up for that? Is there any way under the CARES Act that we could supplement in the way of a nurse's aid or something to help with some of the paperwork, not dealing with students directly? I just wonder how we're going to do that, Dr. Kascón.
Mr. Trigscals, thank you so much for that. I appreciate you calling attention to that plan and to our nurses. I had the opportunity, I asked to join the district nurses' meeting last week and I will be joining that meeting with Ms. Gogarty moving forward just so that I can stay, you know, up to speed with what their thoughts are, their insights, their concerns. And we, coincidentally, Mr. Calabano and I met today with Ms. Granato, who's overseeing the submission of the COVID CARES one-time grant, which after giving to the non-pubs will be about a little over $600,000 for us. And one of the buckets, if you will, that we've kind of identified for for that funding will be speech equipment.
Scott.
I'm sorry, you actually, yeah, pause for a minute, your last sentence just...
I'm not supposed to freeze, that's not supposed to happen to me. It says my interconnection, my internet connection is unstable. Well, you know, I guess if that's the only thing that's unstable, it's good news. Am I good now?
Yes, yeah, it usually takes a couple of seconds to cycle through.
Gotcha, okay, very good. So in meeting with Ms. Granato, Mr. Calabano and I, Ms. Granato would be overseeing the submission of our COVID CARES Act grant, the district after giving to the non-pubs will receive, non-public schools will receive a little over $600,000. And one of the principal buckets that we're looking to dedicate funding for is specifically nursing services. Now, our conversation today spoke, you know, primarily to materiel and things of that nature, but I'm glad you mentioned that because it is something where we could allocate some monies towards professional services if need be to provide additional nursing. Of course, the board was, had the vision to support the addition of an additional school nurse. That'll certainly help in sharing the workload. But absolutely, I've taken a personal and active interest in working with the nurses and they're going to be very critical, obviously, in our plans moving forward.
Great, I know we can't supplant, but we can supplement. And I just thought that that might be a way to give them some relief just to remove some of that paperwork in some way.
Actually, the good news, Ms. Trigscals, is that the typical supplant versus supplement parameter does not apply to this money. We could, we can supplant, we could supplant away if we want.
Oh, fabulous, okay, great, that's real good news.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, anything further on CNI or business?
Yes.
CNI, finance, yeah.
Two quick questions on item number four. Just clarification on the establishment of the Special Education Program for Autism at Gregory. Do we know currently what the capacity would be for students at Gregory? And is it correct to assume that students would be able to attend there regardless of where they live in town? That they wouldn't just need to be in the Gregory neighborhood?
The latter question is a definitive yes. And I would just like to say that, you know, the bit of a misnomer, though it's, you know, special education program, I mean, this is, this is in essence, it is a program, but it's in essence a section, it's a class. And, you know, Mrs. Mordecai is correct. You know, the prior approach had been to try and really house all our programs underneath that roof. In fact, they had moved, you know, the preschool students out of there, the previous house to Kelly School. But we simply don't have the room in that school right now. Now, looking long-term, the possibility of perhaps, you know, looking at a building to be kind of our all-inclusive facility for our special education programs, I do think that that is something from a facility standpoint which we should aspire. But that, not unlike our plan for a new preschool, is a more long-term plan. And in the interim, this provides us the ability to give these services in district to these students and keep them in their community and save the taxpayers some money in added district tuition. And there is room to grow there in terms of the program and the class.
Okay, great. And then, thank you, and also on item number six, a question about the fee for the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia. Is that fee a one-time fee or is it annual?
That's a good question, Mr. Rothstein.
I try to save my good questions for you.
If I, if I may, I'm not... If I, if I may, I'll, um, I'm not sure of that answer. I, I, my first response would be that that would be an annual fee. But let me find out the answer to that for you. And, uh, you know, I, but, um, I, I, I think this is, if that were something that, you know, that the board would want an answer to, uh, prior to voting on this motion, we could table the motion. Until such time that I could get the answer to that question.
I'm, I'm personally comfortable with, uh, with moving forward with it. I was curious, I'm, I'm, from what I understand, it seems like a, uh, an important, uh, an important feature to add.
Okay, I am seeking clarity on that. And I may actually have it for you within less than 10 seconds.
Um, I'll just use the brief opportunity to just mention that, you know, having, uh, served for the one meeting we had this year before the, uh, virus took over things on the website committee. The, the difference is really night and day between what, for mobile users from what we have now to what we will have. Once that's done, it's, uh, going to be significantly more usable on phones than it has been. So I'm looking forward to that.
That's good to hear.
Mr. Alper?
Yes, sir.
Of course, it's, um, it's, it's, uh, the world of board to determine whether the tabling of that motion is, uh, desired. You know, in the absence of that information, um, it's, it's a fair question. So I would, you know, present the possibility of tabling the motion. You know, if the board felt that they wanted to have that information as to whether that's annual or, um, or one-time.
If anybody would like to table it, you can make a motion to do that. And then that could be seconded and voted on. If not, we can go ahead.
I, I was curious, but I personally don't feel that's necessary.
Gotcha. All right, seeing no one else jumping in, if there's no further questions, we can vote. And again, this is, uh, Special Services one through six and Business Office, uh, one through eighteen. Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger? Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President, Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next reports, item one, may I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Right, Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger? Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President, Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. And last, uh, miscellaneous, uh, where we're updating the calendar to reflect that June 2nd, uh, which previously was a day off for the primary election, uh, since the primary has been moved and since school's not taking place in buildings right now anyway. Uh, school will now be in session on the 2nd, that's what that is. May I have a motion?
Ms. Merklinger, just to mention you've been muted, just be careful.
Oh, thank you.
I think we heard you through the other computers, just make sure.
Okay.
Someone make the motion?
Oh, I'll motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All yours.
All right, Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President, Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, uh, public comment on any topic at all. Again, you can press the button to raise your hand. Uh, when you come in, please give us your name and address. And again, please do adhere to the three-minute time limit so that we can get through everyone. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And as mentioned before, you can raise your hand at any time you are put in the order that you raise your hand. I have Denise, if you can please follow the prompt that's on your screen. Okay, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Denise Squanlau, 9 Rocker Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, first and foremost, uh, I'd like to thank Dr. Kascón and Mrs. DeMendez, as well as their guest speaker, uh, my apologies, as I can't recall his name at this time, uh, for taking a moment to address this past week's tragic events. With that said, in 2018, the NJEA announced that it will recognize Black Lives Matter at School Week to take place during Black History Month since, uh, clearly the latter addresses important past events. However, we also obviously need to, uh, take a look at events that are presently unfolding as well as necessary change that will hopefully come about. Uh, apparently there is no data, uh, to show which districts had taken part in the program. However, I believe I'd heard that the South Orange Maplewood District had indeed taken part in this initiative. Therefore, I was just wondering how we as a district can also participate in such an important week during the 2021 school year. Also, uh, just one other brief mention. Uh, just a quick thank you to Mrs. Trick Scales for acknowledging that the mental health of the students has to be top priority once we're back in brick and mortar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sia, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen? Okay, can you hear us?
This is Sia's husband, this is Dr. Kalafani. How are you doing today?
Good, can you just, uh, talk a little bit louder? I'm having a little, little trouble hearing you.
Yes, this is, uh, Dr. Akil Kalafani is Sia's husband.
Okay, sorry about that, that's,
That's okay, no problem, I'm just on her, I'm on her computer.
No problem, thanks.
So, um, I was, uh, had two things I wanted to address. I don't know if this was addressed earlier or not. I, I was on another meeting with the mayor earlier, so I, I, I didn't, wasn't able to attend all of it. But, um, I wanted to see to what extent the, well, first of all, let me commend, uh, the, uh, the school board and the principals and the superintendent for the job that's been done handling, uh, this process. Uh, I know it's been challenging. And so I want to commend you all for, uh, handling a lion's effort. The, even the children were very appreciative of the many comments that Dr. Kascón, uh, the frequency to which he had, um, uh, communicated with them, so that's been helpful. But I wanted to, uh, see to what extent the school board is looking to address the issues with the students that's going on across the country right now. And, um, and, you know, I know we're planning something, I'm on, I serve on the West Orange Human Relations Commission and we're, we have some things that we're working on. And then I, as a, a, a citizen, I'm working on, um, some other things, uh, to address these issues, a couple of events that I'm organizing. So I wanted to just see what the, uh, school board is doing and at the different levels. How do you both protect the students from, uh, uh, the exposure to so much, uh, violence going on? Particularly the police violence and then some of the responses to that. And then also, how are you helping to address the students' desire to express themselves? Because I know this is, uh, normally in school, you'd have, uh, 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 some assemblies. We've worked, the West Orange Human Relations Commission has worked with, uh, um, Professor Sayre, Dr. Sayers before to organize things. And so, you know, how, how now is the high school and the middle schools responding to this type of thing? And then the last thing I wanted to do was just to follow up on my comment at the last board meeting that I attended, uh, with regard to the Amistad, uh, uh, legislation, follow up and see what the status, uh, status report on, on where that is at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kristen, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Okay, um, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Kristen Russell, 53 Lawrence Avenue, me again. Just, I wanted to thank you, um, that makes me feel a lot better about ESY and that you are looking towards adapting things and also towards next year. Cause I am, you know, well aware, we are probably not going to be back full-time for the full year. So that does make me feel a lot better. So just thank you for that. And obviously, as always, thank you for everything you've done with the, um, allergy awareness and getting that going. You know, as you all know, that does mean a lot to me and my family and a lot of us, so thank you. And that was all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, do we have anybody else in the audience? Again, it's the raise your hand button. Nicole, thank you, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Okay, are you there?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Um, thank you, Nicole Rufo for Overlook Avenue. And I, um, first just want to take a moment to thank Dr. Kascón for his letter to the community about this very difficult week that we've just been through and are still going through as a country. I appreciate that he shared the mindful exercise today that was dedicated to the, the pain and unrest that people are feeling. Um, I also wanted to thank Mark Manasalco for his heartfelt words, um, especially in behalf of the staff. Just taking a moment to honor the lives of people who've been murdered in the last couple of months, months. Um, Ahmed Aubrey, Breonna Taylor, and George Floyd. As a mother, I stand with all the black mothers and fathers in our community right now who are feeling the devastation of these great losses. And, um, just as a white woman right now, I'm still learning about the ways that racism lives within me and ways that I can undo the racism. I've committed to being an anti-racist. That just means basically that I'm going to be continued to learning and thinking about ways that I can grow and, and change for the rest of my life. I know many other parents are going through the same thing. And I think that our district needs to support the staff and the community members and the students as they all are embarking on this journey. Many parents have been coming to the board for years, asking for important changes. We've been asking for the Amistad curriculum to be revisited and used correctly in all the grade levels. We've asked for the staff to participate in courageous conversations on race. Learning words such as white privilege, equity, anti-racism, Black Lives Matter, and, um, being an ally. Were all new vocabulary for, words for me at one point. And I'm still learning what they mean. Our entire community of educators, students, and families need to be able to be on the same page with this knowledge and this conversation. I, I just ask that our district really takes the time to make sure that this happens and make sure that it happens carefully and that it includes everybody. And not to burden our black community members to educate us, but to learn on our own through resources that you, you know, can provide by websites, books, trainings, et cetera. The NJEA submitted a pretty powerful statement today and their last quote was that we must let our decisive, unapologetic actions speak more loudly than any statement can. And, um, uh, I would also like to thank the board, um, Dr. Kascón and Mrs. Gogarty and all the nurses for your work on the allergy policy. That is a very important life or death situation for our family. And it's just going to be wonderful that there's actually a policy to protect the students in the school. So again, thank you so much for your work. And it meant a lot to my, um, children with food allergies to see the curriculum based, the health lesson of the week during allergy awareness week to be based on food allergies. So again, thank you for that. And if you can do that for allergy awareness, then I'm sure that the curriculum can grow for awareness on anti-racism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen? Okay, are you there?
Good evening, my name is,
Thank you.
My name is Danielle Robinson, I live at 337 Aranio Drive. And, um, I also want to echo the sentiments of the people who went before me regarding social justice inclusion being into the West Orange school curriculum from the K through 12 level. And check on what's going on with the diversity committee. I went to some meetings before COVID and I'm wondering what is going on to pick that up. I haven't gotten any emails, I think, since February. And, um, if we're talking about the mental health of the students and, um, you know, in town, I think that this is something that needs to be, uh, it, it's as important as any academic lesson is for students to learn how to be, um, more engaged in social justice, anti-racist curriculum for the students as well as for the teachers. They need that professional development to have those conversations. I wish that the statement, uh, from the superintendent was a little bit stronger in terms of, um, being actively anti-racist. It's not enough to just, you know, be nice to people. We have to actually dismantle these systems in power. We are not in the district, we left the district five years ago, but we are, one of my children will be returning to Roosevelt. Um, in the fall, will, will be attending Roosevelt in the fall. And I hope to see some, um, some of this included in the curriculum when we come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Elijah, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen? Elijah Roberts, if you can follow the prompt that's on your screen?
Okay, hello?
There we go, hi.
Sorry about that, this is Kabir Myers, I'm on, um, the computer of my husband, Elijah Roberts. Hi, good, good evening, everyone. So again, I'm Kabir Myers, I live at 157 Marion Drive. And I want to echo the sentiments of the parent who just spoke. Um, I think that it's very important in light of, um, the events of today that we talk about social justice. What does it mean to participate in social justice, not just as a student, but as a teacher? I wanted to know where we are right now, um, with the implicit bias training. I know that the Board of Ed gave an update, uh, on that. And there was a survey that was, uh, introduced or, or being worked on. I don't know if that survey was disseminated yet, um, but I was wondering if the board could give an update on the, um, district-wide implicit bias training. And I would also, if you would, please, uh, uh, provide us with an update on the, uh, Amistad, uh, curricula. And I would also ask to, um, for the, the Board of Ed to consider substantially incorporating current events into the curricula, including, you know, what we're experiencing right now with the civil unrest, with the protests, the justifiable protest, um, at the, as a result of, of police brutality against people of color in this country. I think that it's so important that that's discussed. My son is 10, but it's at the forefront of his mind, uh, every day. So our kids are not being shielded from this at all. So I think that it's something that, um, that I think should be, uh, intelligently incorporated into the curriculum. So I wanted to know what the board was thinking about, uh, or if the board would think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else at this time using the raise your hand button on the, located at the bottom of your screen? Yes, oh, thank you. Sharon, if you can follow the prompt?
Yes, hi, good evening, this is Sharon Bornhage again, 24 Sheridan Avenue. I'm piggybacking on the topic of unconscious bias, um, training for the staff. If you can just talk about, um, those, you know, uh, lessons that are, uh, being shared with educators. But specifically also how, what channels students have to address or raise any issues of bias by educators, administrators, et cetera. I unfortunately, um, had a situation where one of my children raised something she observed and she didn't know where to raise the issues. And so she certainly, it was something that was something that should have been raised. But again, offering those channels of where they should report those items, whether it's founded, unfounded, where should they go to, what counselor, should they seek advice, should they seek? I think my history also, unfortunately, I've had situations, um, by administrators and school educators in the past that I've experienced as, and as young children. And, um, sometimes they're often too afraid to bring up these issues to other administrators, so they bring it to parents. So if you could share the channels with parents and with children as they feel comfortable raising some of those issues and having those addressed by the administration as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize, my screen froze and I was not able to use the timer on that one. And Sia, if you can, uh, please follow the prompt that will be showing up on your screen? Oh, it's, is it on under Sia?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it is. Okay.
Okay.
There you go. Sure.
Yeah, so this is Sia, now my husband's. This is Sia Calfani at 172 Clarkin Drive. And I'm not sure if this was discussed before because I got on the meeting a little late. But I had a question in regards to the interactiveness of the classes. They are very student-driven, which, you know, my, my, my children are familiar with because we did homeschool for a couple of years and this is for my sixth grader, her first year back. So she's homeschooling again. But when, when we were homeschooling, it was a lot more interactive. And I was wanting to know if this is going to continue in the fall. What are the plans for having a more interactive learning session with the children? Oh, and also for Edison Middle School. I didn't see anything about any type of graduation or end of the year thing like I've seen in the past for my other, my older children. So wondering what was going on with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else this time using the raise your hand button? We have no more.
All right, um, a lot of good comments and questions in there. You know, some I think we're gonna have to look into. Some Dr. Kascone may have some immediate feedback on shortly. I think what I would just, you know, want to say though is, you know, there aren't easy answers and I'm certainly not the person to give the answers, but I'll say this. We need to listen to the voices that are telling us our systems are built on centuries of inequality and racism. We can have the best of intentions and I think we do, but we too often rely on systems that predate our good intentions. And we have to examine that because I think people tend to, they believe in the systems. And when those aren't built on solid ground, it leads to bad decisions, whether we're talking about education or about what's happening in the wider world. And that leads, you know, when the system's in place, people have a tendency not to question things. It's our collective job to examine those issues in our own system and to work to fix it. You know, there are difficult conversations that have to be held along the way. Some of us started having some of those last year with Ms. Mendez and I thought they were very valuable. You know, all in all, it's why we go to the trainings we go to. It's why we approve the professional development that we do, which is why we try to look at everything we do through an equity lens. We're committed to making sure that we have a school district where every student is safe, not just physically, but emotionally, to learn and to grow in an environment that's nurturing and cognizant of who our students are, where we all are, where we've been and where we want to be. You know, one of the many things I saw online today was this quote, and it was retweeted enough times that I don't know who to originally credit for it, but it was this. "I understand that I will never understand, however, I stand." So I thought that really resonated, you know, I can't, I can't personally understand the pain, the fear, the outrage. I can certainly emphasize, but I can't personally understand what so many of our Black families must be feeling with all this happening. But I do emphasize and I stand with you in my commitment to work to help. With that, Dr. Kascone, if you have anything specific on any of those topics?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Yes, I'd just like to address a few specific questions which came up, which I can definitely answer at this point in time. And that the specific of the diversity, the Diversity Committee. This was an initiative that started prior to my arrival. It's an endeavor that we continued working closely with Ms. Mendez on this. Obviously, the school closures put, put, put the brakes to some extent on our plans. We were moving forward for a May 15 training specific to kind of starting our, our action plan and our, and our professional development and training with regard to implicit biases and microaggressions and things of that nature. And obviously, we were not able to hold that training. You know, our work, which was really focused on three areas in particular, was recruitment, hiring, retention, training and staff development. And then we had a segment on, obviously, on our programs, you know, equity and access to programs. And those, those will continue. You know, I think in, in the wake of this, it is probably high time that even in this virtual setting that we try and, and restart our efforts and reconnect with people who had served on the committee with us. Admittedly, we had put those efforts on hold for the time being as you can imagine managing, you know, what we've been managing over the course of the last four to six weeks or even, you know, months at this point in time. And we are moving forward with leadership training over the summer and, you know, we need to have a conversation about professional development for next year. Because obviously, we had big plans for next year, but we'll have to see where we stand in terms of being in buildings and how we're going to continue to move staff development forward in that regard. But those, that committee, the work that's being done that on that committee remains a strong commitment of my administration and the board, and we will absolutely move forward in our work with that. As far as the Amistad curriculum goes, you know, and Mr. Mendez, we presented, since I've been here, we've presented on two separate occasions to the, to the public on the Amistad Commission. In my meeting earlier in the year with Tom Purrier and the local unit of the N double A C P, I shared with him and his team the curriculum and where we stand presently. Can we, can we do more? Absolutely. And I think one of the big takeaways which came out of some of our analysis this year was really looking at our social studies curriculum and being, developing a curriculum that makes sense for our community, that's culturally responsive to our community and not necessarily one that is strictly beholden to when the standards tell us we should be introducing information. You know, it was very telling for me when I listened to students of color and they tell me with the, the only, the only, the only Black historical figures that I was, you know, exposed to in elementary school was, you know, Harriet Tubman and slaves. And that's not, that's absolutely unacceptable and we need to really think through that. And, and do better with our curriculum. But we do have an Amistad curriculum. It has been presented on multiple occasions. I do believe that there's access to it on the website. And if you had any specific questions regarding that curriculum, I would absolutely encourage people to reach out to Mrs. Mendez as the Assistant Superintendent or Mr. Figurito, who is the Social Studies Supervisor. But we continue to look at that for ways to, to refine that. As far as the, the interactive learning for the fall, and I know that Mr. Maniscalco and members of the W O E A are on the call and we are committed to coming together collaboratively before the end of the school year to really understand how we can ensure that we have more consistent inter- interaction with students at home. Now, I will tell you that synchronous learning comes with, comes with challenge, challenges for some of our students. We have to be careful about requiring students to be on the computer at a certain time to benefit from direct instruction. Because not all of our households are households where kids are, are able to do that. In fact, what we've learned through this experience is that many of our students did not get on the computer until later in the evening when their parents came home from work and they could assist them. So requiring a child who may not necessarily have parental supervision or at least parental or familial supervision that can assist them with that work, requiring them to be on the computer at a certain time is something that needs to be looked at carefully. But rest assured, I think we've heard the parent community, we've heard the student groups in, in terms of the need to have more consistent teacher and student interactivity. Hopefully, we will not have the need for that, but we are preparing for that if we do. Just going back to Dr. Calfani's questions, circling back to the beginning. I think that there's two ways to, to look at how we're responding to the most recent events. I think one is to honor the work and the traditions that exist in this school district prior to these events. And, and I spoke to this in my opening statement about the way in which, in particular, the high school administration and Mr. Moore under his leadership has really honored and embraced and supported student advocacy for issues that they feel strongly about. And whether it was gun violence or whether it was racism, you know, that is a high school with a, with a long tradition of students vocalizing their concerns and, and demonstrating and protesting. So in terms of how we're working with them, I understand that Mr. Moore spoke with his student leaders and student union today and had a really open and constructive conversation with them in trying to support them at the same time, do what we do as schools, which has helped to guide and instruct and mentor to kids to help them to make the right decisions about how they do that. But that has always been a part of Mr. Moore's administration and will continue to be at the high school. And it's obviously something that, you know, I support very much as well. So, you know, so we have the immediate term. And, and if I told you that our plans were fully baked at this point in time, I, I would ask you to, your, your allowance to provide us with perhaps a bit more time, a day, two days, to try and make sense of this as well and amidst the virtual, the virtual operation of schools where we don't have the benefit of interacting with our students and our student groups in person to, to develop some, some plans. There are, there are a number of things in the works. Insofar as public forums, I'm looking at planning a public forum for both parents and students to hear and to listen. And so we have a lot of ideas that are on the table right now. In, in the short term, what we are doing is, is that we are messaging out to our teachers, providing them with resources and giving them the latitude to be able to take a break from the academics and provide opportunities for students to be able to have open conversations about this and at the same time, interweaving the work that they're doing with, with these, these events, whether it be journal writing in, in English and the like. But we are adjusting to this, this immediacy as, as everybody else is. And we would just ask the public's patience in the next day or two as we kind of finalize some of these plans and develop some of these things. But again, I think part of it is, is just recommitting and, and reiterating our fidelity to certain things which have already been in motion in this district. I haven't been in the district very long. What I have consistently stated, you know, and is reflected in our district goals, if you look at our district goals and the goals that this board set, they are very much directed to bridging gaps, bridging achievement gaps, establishing environments that are socially, emotionally supportive. And, you know, to the students and the staff and the manner in which I conduct myself with, with the stakeholders and, and with, with my students and with our staff and our parents. You know, I choose to, to, to lead by example. I choose to lead by my actions. I certainly, over the course of my career, have, have, have always advocated and, and served all students and all parents. And, you know, and I will, you know, vocally, obviously, speak out against any forms of races or hatred, hatred or violence or things of, of that nature. Anyone that works within the school district or is a member of the school district and has seen my messaging and interacted with me has seen that. But I appreciate the feedback and I'm always open to hearing feedback in way in which my message can resonate more clearly and more strongly with the community. And so I always appreciate that. And the words of a former colleague and mentor, if you don't know, you don't grow. So I do appreciate that. And rest assured, this administration, and I know this board is very committed to focusing on these, these very vital issues moving forward for the benefit of our children. That's why we're here. And that's what we do here. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Kascone. All right, board member reports. First, Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, Dr. Kascone, for your thoughtful comments earlier in this meeting and just now. And to the members of the community for your comments, especially on social justice. These are very challenging times and I believe very, very sincerely in the mission of public school education. That means many things. It's academic excellence. It is raising our children to be successful citizens in our country. And it's helping to develop good, decent human beings who can pick up the tools and the materials that we've left for them and continue to build a better world than the one that we have right now. In these past few weeks, especially in these past few days, I found myself moving back and forth between two feelings. Hope, thanks to all of the good souls out there, and I'm fortunate to have many of them in my life, and despair for the senseless taking of life over and over again. I read this comment from an op-ed piece by Kareem Abdul-Jabbar that ran in the Los Angeles Times a couple of days ago. He says, "Racism in America is like dust in the air. It seems invisible, even if you're choking on it, until you let the sun in. Then you see it's everywhere. As long as we keep shining that light, we have a chance of cleaning it wherever it lands. But we have to stay vigilant because it's always still in the air." I'm very deeply moved by, by that vision and by his direction to let the sun in. I think one of the most important ways that we can educate our students is to give them the tools needed to repair our world. The concepts of social justice and the knowledge of history and current events is critical. I appreciate everyone who's raised their hands tonight and spoken tonight, and please keep that dialogue up. I'm committed to listening and I'm committed to doing what I can to help. And I am also committed to working with my colleagues on the board to focus West Orange schools on the, being centers of hope and justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kascone? You're muted.
You're muted. There you go.
I'd like to thank Mr. Maniscalco and so happy that he could join us. I really wanted to hear the voice of the teachers and the staff because you are at the center of making the e-learning work. So, so happy that you could join us. The board attended an equity training workshop a while back. And unfortunately, we've never had the opportunity or taken the opportunity or made the opportunity to debrief and to really come up with a plan for moving forward. And I, I think that that has to be a priority for our board as we move forward. I thank the folks who came on tonight. I've been pushing for diversity training. I've been pushing for the hiring of a more diverse staff. We weren't able to have our diversity fair this spring. Unfortunately, what happens when hiring is the last hired are sometimes the first fired.
Terry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your camera is just on the bottom of your face. We want to make sure we see your whole face there.
Okay, I have to. Okay, is that better?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, I was plugged in charging with a short cord. So it's, it's important that we continue to move forward with our hiring and to seek out qualified staff so that our youngsters, both Black and white and Asian and Hispanic, get to see students and teachers, I should say, who look like them. Studies have shown that where students have teachers who look like them, they are much more successful throughout the course of their careers. Our, our staff is wonderful. And we know that they're doing a fine job, but we can have to continue to make efforts to bring more diversity to our staff. Change is inevitable. It's, it's something that's often hard for people to accept and to swallow. But West Orange is changing. Schools are changing. The whole concept of education is changing. And we have to be on the forefront. We need to be leaders. We, we, we can be in the forefront here in West Orange. We certainly have the skill and the talent within our staff to lead the way. I know that Black Lives Matter, that week came and passed for us. I am sure that next year we will be celebrating that here in West Orange. We made a very concerted effort this year for our celebration of Black History Month. And we talked about that it shouldn't be just that month. our celebration of Black History Month, and we talked about that it shouldn't be just that month, but that it should be throughout the year. And Dr. Alphani, you offer it to help us in that regard, and we need to take you up on that offer with the Amistad curriculum and with incorporating more of our cultural diversity into our curriculum. I wrote something and posted on Facebook. This is the first posting I've ever done on Facebook. But with what's been going on, I just felt compelled. The board has not put out a formal statement. We've been unable to move forward with some solidarity on some of the language, but I wanted to do something on my own. And this is an abbreviated version. But it just said that, and this is from the heart. "I riddled with emotions. My heart palpitates with sorrow and anger. My eyes fill with tears and I hear George Floyd cry for his mother. I think of my black son and recall the countless times that he has called out to me to help him, to solve his problems, to rescue him, to explain racist acts directed at him, to allay his fears and just to be there for him and love him. That's what mothers do. That's what George was pleading for. Help, a rescue, his life. I'm a product of the civil rights era. I've been on this earth for almost seven decades. Don't usually say that, but it's true. And have experienced racism, bigotry, injustice and hateful ignorance. It comes in many forms and faces. It can be blatant or it can be couched in platitudes. Or often it comes just simply by omission. I am a living expression and I recommit to something very simple, the golden rule. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you," which is from Luke, chapter six, verse 31. "It may sound very cliche, but I can do more. I can feel more. I can help more. I can understand more. I can empathize more. I can express more and I can be more. I'm asking you to commit to more good in this world. Each one of us, like a single droplet of water, can work together to form a wave of equity, justice, compassion, kindness, empathy and trust to wash away the hatred, the violence and inhumanity to man. George Floyd, we hear you. Thank you."
Thank you. Ms. Tonakliff. I'm sorry, Ms. Merklinger. We go left to right and I can never remember where we are.
Sorry, I just realized I was on mute. You know, I echo the sentiments of Gary and Terry and I appreciate they're taking the time to, to be so eloquent with, with their words and just the sentiments that I think a lot of folks are just dealing with a lot of differences on how to handle this. It's definitely an emotional time for, for a lot of folks. And so from my perspective, I would just, you know, remind everyone that you never know what anyone that you run into is going through. You don't know, regardless of color, regardless of gender, regardless of anything and everything under the sun, anyone you meet is dealing with something. And just to be kind. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, I learned it in kindergarten, you know, the golden rule Terry just mentioned, you know, be kind to others. And, you know, everyone knows I'm a sports person, so I thought it was really, um, really poignant of what Patrick Mahomes, Super Bowl quarterback, said today. And he said, "I grew up in a locker room where people from every race, every background and every community came together and became brothers to accomplish a single goal. I hope that our country can learn from the injustices that we have witnessed to become more like the locker room where everyone is accepted." For those of you that don't know, Patrick Mahomes comes from a family where he has a biracial family. So he has both, his father is African American, his mother is white. And so I just think that, you know, that's someone who a lot of our students look up to. And I just encourage folks to, you know, be kind to one another. I know there were some comments earlier and I want to thank everyone who did, you know, comment and join tonight. And I will tell you that I am in the, actually in the process of working with Mr. Moore. And that's something that growing up with Mr. Moore, it was something that, you know, I've seen him bring this talent together and, and just the community. And so we're working to put something together to speak with students, give them that forum along with, there's other folks that are doing things in, in the community to give that space for students. But just, um, just ask, you know, for patience, like Dr. Kasko said, just give us the patience or give us the time just to kind of process and meet the needs of our students and put something together that is productive for them. And again, just be mindful of everyone's dealing with something and, and folks deal with things in different ways and manners. So I can't stress enough the mental health of folks and just being kind to one another. So that's really it for now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tonakliff. I think, I'm not hearing.
You're not muted, but I cannot hear you. Are you plugged in? Just unplug and replug back in?
This darn button on the thing. So there were, I just want to thank Mr. Maniscalco for coming on and speaking this evening. We appreciate your words and we appreciate everyone, all of our teachers who've worked so hard through this pandemic to help continue to educate our students and have that continuity that we have for the kids. And I also wanted to thank all of the members of the public who came out tonight and talked about the things that are really important to them. You know, when George Floyd died and I thought, felt a little despondent feeling that how many more times is this gonna happen? And wondering what I can do, what we can do as a collective board to ensure that we're educating our students and making sure that they have a rich education in, and that it's diverse and that it's equitable and that we're discussing and making sure our children have everything they need to be a solid citizen. I think one of the things that I've been thinking about is the omission. What do we do? We know we have to have conversations and I appreciate the fact that Dr. Kasko is already opening that door with the memo he sent out earlier this week. And I look forward to being part of those and being able to see what we can do for our students and make sure that we're sending our students out into the world better prepared than they would be otherwise. I think shining the light as Mr. Rothstein mentioned, that Kareem Abdul-Jabbar had said, you know, we need to be more cognizant of shining that light continually, not just in times of crisis and times of, of horror that we've experienced, but doing that always and making sure we're, we're being that light in our school district and bringing light and understanding and education to students because education is still the most powerful tool to help foster understanding and kindness and compassion. So I believe strongly that we have a good program. I believe that we're working towards being even better. And I just hope that the communities can heal and that we can all do our part to heal. So thank you for everyone being here tonight. Thanks, Mr. Alper.
Thank you. Thanks to each of my colleagues for their words. Mr. Kasko in particular, I think that was very moving. Mr. Rothstein, that was also a, you know, from Kareem Abdul-Jabbar, a fantastic metaphor. And thanks to Mr. Maniscalco for joining us tonight as well. Um, I think I've covered my part. Our next meeting is 7:30 PM on possibly June 15th. We're possibly moving that to June 22nd. We'll keep you posted on that front. And I believe that is all for this evening. I have a motion to adjourn. All right. Thank you. Have a good night. Stay safe. Take good care of each other.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. This is just a reminder that when I end this meeting, it will end for both the panelists and those in attendance in the audience, and no other business will be conducted once this meeting ends. Thank you all and have a great night.
Thank you, Lauren.